To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to formally welcome Maria Capriola as Simsbury's first town manager under this new form of government. We are still working through seating arrangements and whatnot, so that's a work in progress. That's something we can discuss. Before we get going, I did want to see if we could add two brief agenda items. These would be under appointments and resignations. Is there a motion to add the appointment of Jacqueline Batos to the zoning commission and then Susan Ray to the recycling committee?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion, all a favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can add those to the agenda. So, public audience, Joan.
Thank you. Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. I would like to report that I have filed a Freedom of Information complaint with the town on January 23rd, 2018, and another complaint on February 7th, 2018, to access all electronic transmissions, private, public, or family, for access to review Director of Planning and Community Development Jamie Rabbit's interactions with his outside employment as a town employee and a public official. The contract reads, quote, "You have advised us that you wish to continue your consulting work for towns of Sterling and Palmford. You have also advised us that you are aware that the service to the town of Simsbury will in all cases take priority over your services to these towns," end quote. According to the Sterling and Palmford website, Jamie Rabbit is on staff. Since Jamie Rabbit is on staff in the towns of Palmford and Sterling, I will file a complaint with those towns for access to information not supplied by Simsbury. Jamie Rabbit is employed by Simsbury full-time as Director of Town Planning and Development with a salary of $117,880. The town should review Jamie Rabbit's contract to see if his outside employment is in conflict and/or overlapping with his employment in Simsbury. On November 27th, 2017, I registered my concerns on the unrealistic requirements Jamie Rabbit has placed on of the approval process for the Storytellers Cottage. I stated at that time, quote, "Recently, there was much discussion about the application for Storytellers Cottage and a dumpster placement associated with the house that held up the approval process." This went on for over six months, leaving the applicant without a temporary certificate of occupancy to start her business under the direction of Jamie Rabbit, town planner, while sorting out this problem. Under the direction of Jamie Rabbit, the zoning commission approved the placement of the dumpster on Railroad Street, a town road that appears to be inconsistent with zoning regulations. The dumpster is not contiguous with the property and now shares the rubbish containment with Eno Hall on shared services. The cost associated with the dumpster owned by Fiddler's Green was approximately $28,000 for the gold standard containment for a dumpster hotel. Fiddler's Green had to post a bond for $22,716 before they could erect the hotel for the dumpster. How many establishments have met these gold standards imposed by Jamie Rabbit on Fiddler's Green? Does this encourage economic development in town? The placement of the dumpster requires off-site transport of waste from both Fiddler's Green and Eno Hall and shared parking. The agreement for shared services is doomed to failure with many requirements for snow-removal parking and cleaning the dumpster, open for interpretation. Jamie Rabbit's testimony on August 7th, 2017 zoning meeting stated that the shared agreements is not an indefinite agreement and could be broken if it doesn't work. I would urge both parties to use the escape clause. In my opinion, the dumpster should be on-site. Of each establishment, parking could be resolved with strict adherence to parking regulations and off-site parking on the commuter parking lot with dial-a-ride shuttle to Eno Hall during increased activities. The town should consider the impact of parking and traffic when approving gathering permits and enforce the restrictions that are imposed on various events. The town should enforce the restrictions of tailgating and pot-smoking on town land during concerts. Recently, there have been allegations of sexual abuse in the gymnastic community around 2000. I had many conversations with a figure skater and her family about allegations of sexual abuse by her coach, Bob Young, at the International Skating Center in Simsbury. According to her accounts during my conversation, she alleged many serious accusations of sexual abuse. She told me at the time of her lawsuit against Bob Young that the Simsbury Police Department did not believe her allegations. During the last conversation I had with her, she stated that she was getting married and wanted to put this all behind her. During the time of these allegations against Bob Young, Steve Fish, the owner of the International Skating Center in Simsbury, after his own investigation, fired Bob Young. During the time of the allegations against Bob Young, there were many skaters also alleging sexual abuse. This is the current reports. On February 12,000, skating coach faces uncertain future. Future at rink, March 2007. Two skaters say ex-coach abused them. April 2007 story of abuse gets even worse. April 2007, skaters' charges detailed in report. Police investigated 99, but did not charge the coach. At this point, it appears that Bob Young has not been arrested for his alleged sexual misconduct and the figure skater is named in the Hartford Current Report. I'm sure that if the Simsbury Police Department investigation was done today, the allegations would result in a different outcome. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, News Feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight in public audience? Okay, and moving on to presentations, we have one presentation tonight. The background is that CROG is in the process of updating its Hazard Mitigation Plan. That's something that needs to happen every five years, and Mike Liddon is on point to provide local coordination from the town and has an update for us tonight.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Liddon, Assistant Town Planner. I am the local plan coordinator for the town of Simsbury. With me this evening is Dave Murphy from Maloney and Bloom. He's the consultant that's been detained by CROG as they update the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Dave will guide us through hazard mitigation, just a brief.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you to the board for letting me present tonight. We have this offer to all the 38 towns of the CROG region, and only so far two have taken me up on the offer to speak, Bloomfield and Simsbury. So it's very exciting that someone said yes. I'm David Murphy from Maloney and Bloom. We're the consultant hired by the CROG to update the Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is about the third, or maybe fourth time, third or fourth time Simsbury will be part of the CROG Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is the first time it's being updated by a consultant. Typically, it's been done in-house by CROG staff. Lynn Pike DeSanto from the CROG is your contact there for this process. Quick agenda for this presentation. Touch on the purpose and need for hazard mitigation planning. How can the plan be used? What hazards we're including in the plan? We'll introduce the concepts of hazard mitigation strategies and actions, and I'll end with a schedule and the next steps, so you know where we're going next. Okay, so hazard mitigation plans are authorized by the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. It surprises many people to hear that hazard mitigation planning sort of got underway before Hurricane Katrina. It was something that, that act was actually amendments to the Stafford Act, and it's a way for FEMA to streamline dispersments of funds for hazard mitigation. So after disasters, FEMA comes in and helps us with the reimbursements on picking up the pieces, but mitigation is kind of a different process. It's what you do ahead of time so that when there is a disaster, the losses are less. So the act encourages preparedness, it encourages hazard mitigation actions to reduce those losses that we encounter when we have disasters. There are three main funding vehicles. There are some others, but pre-disaster mitigation, PDM, FMA, and HMGP are the three that we typically hear about for mitigation funds. There's a graphic on the right-hand side there of how FEMA has, in the recent years, been spending those funds nationwide. The one that has a lot of the money, frankly, in Connecticut is HMGP. That's funded after declared disasters. The other two are sort of more specific. I think Simsbury actually has used the FMA. That's what we're using for the acquisition of the property right now next to the Farmington River, the middle one, flood mitigation assistance. So all three grants used in the state, but typically HMGP has most of the funding. Simsbury is using FMA right now. Here in Connecticut, most initial plans were developed in 2005. That's when the CROG first developed a hazard mitigation plan. Local plans are updated every five years. Here in the capital region, there's a twist this year, and I'll tell you what it is. When OPM rearranged the Cogs in Connecticut, the councils of governments a few years ago, there were two Cogs that were dissolved, the former Central Connecticut region and then the Wyndham region. So the towns from those two Cogs, four towns from one and four towns from another, joined Capital Region Council of Governments. So the plan is going from 30 to 38 communities. And I believe you were in Mansfield. That's one of the towns that was affected by the reorganization. So we finished the Mansfield Hazard Mitigation Plan as part of the Wind Cog region a few years ago. Now you're joining, Mansfield is joining this one. So mitigation, in case I haven't sort of defined it by now, it's the actions that we take ahead of time to reduce losses. So during floods, during wildfires, during landslides, during winter storms. So elevating a building above the flood elevation or removing it from a floodplain, that's mitigation. Having sandbags is great. That's sort of mitigation, right? You can put sandbags out to reduce flood losses, but you have to do it before the flood's occurring and hope that you make it on time. So mitigation is really the long-term actions that we take that reduce losses. We're not directly addressing disaster response to recovery. We're not addressing terrorism sabotage. We're not here to write the town's EOP. Your emergency management officials will do that, and we need to make sure we take a look at that and dovetail with it, but that's not part of what we're doing. So the coolest part of this presentation always, I feel like, is when we say, how can the plans be used? Here's a couple more graphics from FEMA that kind of give you a nationwide snapshot of how the grants are used after communities have plans. So the left-hand graphic shows kind of where a lot of the mitigation funds are spent nationwide. Not a lot of surprises. The Midwest has been using funds for flooding and for tornadoes. We don't really have to deal with both of those things here as much. The graphic on the right-hand side shows building acquisitions and elevations are the number one and two ranked most funded, and that's what Simsbury is doing right now with the FMA funds for the property along the Farmington River. It's an acquisition. Flood control there in the middle is the next category of most funded projects. The fourth one down is tornado safe rooms, which is something that we simply don't have need for in Connecticut. And then number five, which is, I think, is a really interesting category, utility infrastructure protection. We are seeing the funding for those kinds of projects here in Connecticut. That's nationwide. This next graphic kind of shows you what you see funded more often in the Northeast, so grants can be used for building acquisitions, elevations, culvert replacements, drainage projects, riverbank stabilization. Farmington's been applying for a while, hasn't really been successful, but up in Massachusetts, a couple of communities along the Deerfield and Connecticut River have gotten funding for riverbank stabilization. And then the last bullet, I'll just skip ahead to that one, which is very exciting, generators, right? So 10 years ago, we had to deliver this bad news to town councils and Board of Selectmen. You know, the grants can't be used for standby power supply. You've got to find some other way. Well, now they can be used for standby power supply. So things change, and that's important to note when you're updating these plans, is put the projects in there, because sometimes FEMA changes its mind in what they'll fund. Here's an example of a culvert replacement that was funded by FEMA mitigation grants. Culvert was continuously washing out. The two pictures on the right-hand side show some of the washouts. FEMA paid for a new culvert that wouldn't wash out, because there's a sewer line beneath it, and the sewer line was at risk of failure every time. Here's a riverbank project that we just finished doing construction inspection on. This was funded by FEMA. The public works facility was at risk of erosion after every storm. So the grants are real, and I would encourage communities to apply for them if you have a taste for working with FEMA. So the hazards that we're including in the plan are the same hazards as last time. We're not reinventing the wheel here, but what we do need to do that's different, it's required by FEMA and by state statute. It's very important that we note that state statute requires this. How does climate change affect the hazards that can be affected by climate change? So that's what that orange box is. So we have to make sure the plan looks at how those things can be changing over time. We're going to talk about the same kinds of hazard mitigation strategies and actions that are currently discussed in the plan, and those are the categories up there on the screen. There are typically six categories that we talk about. The names of them are kind of self-explanatory, so like natural resources protection is buying up open space and floodplains. Structural projects are replacing bridges and culverts. The only word there that I think is not always evident is prevention doesn't mean preventing the hazard, it means preventing the damage. So building codes fall under prevention, state building code, and zoning regulations falls under prevention. So we're going to continue to use those six categories. I'm going to take you through just a couple examples of existing mitigation in the capital region, so you have a taste for the kinds of things that we'll be talking about. So perhaps you don't know, or maybe you do know, that Plainville, not too far away, in the same drainage basin, Farmington River, of course, has been quietly acquiring properties near the Paquodoc River. I think they're up to about 2021, and FEMA has paid 75% of the cost of these acquisitions. People can move out of the floodplain. Also in the capital region, many of you have driven through Hartford in the spring and seen the boathouse, which is wet floodproof. That's the kind of mitigation. So after the river subsides, they can go in and quickly clean up the building and use it the next day. That's mitigation. I mentioned earlier that under the category of prevention, that regulations can be mitigation. I have an example of Mansfield. Perhaps you were in Mansfield when the town went through and updated its zoning regulations. Here's an example of the low-impact development text that's in the regulations, and that is considered mitigation because it can reduce stormwater generation. And then we always have a slide-in for our friends who are from emergency services. I don't know if there's any in the room, but this is the South Windsor Emergency Operations Center with a new roof that they say is reportedly designed to withstand Category 3 hurricane. That also is mitigation, because if we had that level of hurricane, the losses would be reduced at this building. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking for as we meet with all the communities in the capital region, ideas to put in the hazard mitigation plan. I met with Mike and his team back in December, I think, and got a lot of good ideas from Simsbury, so we'll be including that in the plan update. Here's our schedule. Most of the schedule is quarters, so third quarter of 2017 is when we were under contract and started. So really, we just got started in the beginning of the winter. Our contract goes through 2019. Because this plan expires in 2019, we're planning to submit a draft to FEMA in the middle of 2018, so that they have time. Sometimes it takes FEMA time to process applications, plans, I mean, especially like this year, when three states were requiring deployment at the same time. FEMA was, you know, really, the planning staff was deployed and couldn't review plans. So that could happen. The next step in this planning process, we have a survey that we've been working on, trading it back and forth, the draft with the CROG. We hope to get that posted online pretty soon. It'll be a Survey Monkey-type survey, and at that point, there'll be a little bit of press on it, so that the patch, for example, was mentioned a few minutes ago, would have an announcement, go to the Simsbury webpage and hit a link to the survey. So we'll look to each town to put a link on their webpage. And then there's another planning meeting coming up. We had one in January. There's one coming up in March to talk about mitigation actions. We don't have the date exactly decided yet. It's depending on room availability. It's going to be in Manchester, because the last one was in Farmington, so we promised the region we'd kind of move around the region. That's all I have, so if you have any questions about hazard mitigation planning, the update itself or the grants that come afterward, I'd welcome questions.
Well, thank you for the update. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, just one. I noticed that you have dam failure as one of the categories on there, so being downriver of the Goodwin Dam, does that get integrated into the plan in some capacity?
It does, right. And dam failure is kind of already in the existing plan. We plan to take a kind of a harder look at that. What's changed between five years ago, when the plan was adopted, and now is the state's dam safety regulations have changed drastically. And that's really affected a lot of the private dam owners who weren't keeping up, not so much the Goodwin Dam. But we're trying to have a meeting with MDC to talk about, you know, the annual drill that they have, and perhaps the town participates in that. I don't know if you participate in the annual...
We did a couple of years ago.
...may have in the past. We want to make sure we talk about that.
Kevin was on the board, I think he did that one?
Yeah. For our local dams, yeah.
Does this apply to local dams or just big?
Well, the plan can cover any dams, local dams as well. We typically focus on the high-hazard dams just because the risk is greater.
The risk, yeah.
Sometimes there's a small dam that's in danger of failing, and we cover those, too. If we have information from the town about some to include, please let us know.
Can we, Mike, please help me, or Sean may know, I believe we put some money in our budget to look at some of our local dams and do evaluations. Am I correct in that?
Through dam safety, I think we recently had a few inspections of our dams. I know that we were clearing some vegetation, one behind the library, is that Sutter or Trigg and upon?
Yep.
That's one that they're investigating, and there may be some corrective actions or improvements that have to be made under our DPD. We're also looking at Lake Seal. So we do look at our dams, but in the hazard map that was provided, was in your packet, we really only had one high-hazard dam in town, and that was the Oliver Toller Dam in Simsbury that popped up.
B or C it is.
B or C.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just thinking that this could benefit the town to use this grant to help us do some of the things we're trying to do.
It may. So the mitigation grants typically, so like I said 10 years ago, generators weren't allowed, and now they are. Right now, studies are not allowed, but designs and construction kind of are, so grant writing is an art, right?
I've heard that.
Kind of get some things in there. And it's not in my presentation, but I'll just add before I leave that Simsbury has the lion's share of the repetitive loss flood properties in the capital region, and so we want to make sure the plan, the chapter on Simsbury talks about those properties and what you're doing to address them, such as the buyout that I mentioned a few minutes ago.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. You. We are going to move on now to the First Selectmen's Report. Again, I'd like to extend my warmest welcome to Maria Capriola. On the job for, I want to say, three weeks? Three weeks. She has hit the ground running, if not by choice, then by necessity. Budget season is underway, work on the 2019 budget. We expect the town manager will present her proposed budget to the Board of Selectmen at our next meeting, February 26th. The next date is Saturday, March 10th, which will be our day-long budget workshop, with additional time on March 15th if needed. The March 10th workshop will be starting at 8:00 a.m., and the public is welcome to attend. Like last year, we're budgeting in uncertain times. We're faced with a projected revenue, the state is faced with a projected revenue shortfall, and Governor Malloy has proposed additional cuts in municipal aid to towns across Connecticut. Simsbury would receive, under his proposal, approximately $200,000 less than initially budgeted, but I want to emphasize that this number is far from final. If the governor's, you know, that's the governor's proposal, but the General Assembly will also have a key role to play in this process, and I'm in frequent communication with Representative Hampton and Senator Whitkows, and I thank them for their efforts. I wanted to give a solar update. Not a lot new to report, but it's important, so I want to reiterate what's going on. On January 22nd, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to appeal the Connecticut Siting Council's ruling to allow a proposed 26-megawatt solar farm to move forward. The purpose of the appeal is to ensure that specific concerns are adequately addressed. So the town is currently in talks with Deep Water Wind, which is the developer of the project, and it's my hope that, you know, these talks will continue and that an agreement can be reached, which would obviate the need for a more drawn-out appeal. I'll emphasize again that the discussions are centering around six key issues, so ensuring public health before, during, and after construction, removing from the project the 54-acre field south of Hoskins Road that's most visible, providing appropriate screening that fits with the natural landscape, developing and funding a comprehensive decommissioning plan, preserving historic barns on the property, and finally, the option for the town to obtain the development rights for the property after the project is decommissioned. Given that Connecticut Siting Council's unanimous approval of the project, it's most likely that a solar farm is coming to Simsbury, but the opportunity that we have is to make sure that the project is done right. Other news, Representative John Hampton and I will be hosting a Policy and Pints at Redstone Pub, February 22nd at 7:00 p.m. Think of it as office hours. It's an opportunity to chat with us in a casual setting about issues that are on your mind, or ask any questions about things happening at the state level or around town. The Farmington Valley Trails Council will present its first annual Trail Safety Expo, that's March 17th, at the Simsbury Public Library. The event is open to the public and free of charge. And on the economic development front, I would like to welcome Anna and Jeff. They're the new owners of Peaberry's Cafe. Also, the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce is holding a ribbon-cutting for Cardinal Gerontology, March 1st at 5:30 p.m., and that'll be held at Storytellers Cottage. So that is, that's my update, and Maria now has a town manager report.
Just a quick question.
Oh, yeah, sure.
On the Policy and Pints, is that a town event? Is that open to the rest of the Board of Selectmen, or is that just John?
Oh, no, that's absolutely open to anybody.
Okay. Yeah, because I wasn't aware of that, so.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
It's a, think of it as office hours, so it's an opportunity for people to come and speak with us and ask any questions or share what's on their mind.
Okay. Awesome.
Maria?
So this is the first of my town managers' reports. Typically, I'll try to cover what I would call Board of Selectmen Business, departmental news and notes, as well as special events. So for the first item under Board of Selectmen Business, I have now had the opportunity to complete my first packet for you all, and I would definitely appreciate some feedback from you all in terms of format, content, how attachments are being presented, or just information in general, how that's being presented in the packet. Being my first packet, I did my best to work with your existing format, but am certainly open to feedback and suggestions, so if you do have feedback or suggestions, please be sure to let me know. Additionally, for those members who have not yet identified a preferred method for your packet delivery, if you could let me know, I would appreciate that. As you all know, I'm trying to move away from having packets delivered to your home by a police officer and deliver those packets either electronically or through the mail. So again, if you have not had a chance to let me know your preference, I would appreciate you doing so. So I've hit the ground running and am beginning to get settled in my new position. I have been very busy meeting with staff members and community members, as well as I have been meeting with individual Board of Selectmen members. And as I've been meeting with folks, I have been flagging potential future projects to work on. And what I'm hoping to do is, once I get a bit more settled and continue to get my bearings, but as well as getting through submitting my budget to you all, I would like the opportunity to bring a list of potential goals and future projects to the Personnel Subcommittee. That would be an extremely helpful exercise for me, to let you all know the projects that I think might be most important and useful for us to work on as an organization. And then ultimately, bringing that list forward after we've had some review and discussion at that level to the full Board of Selectmen. Again, that will be helpful to me in prioritizing projects for the organization. That will be also helpful in advancing your goals as a board. A couple of items related to this evening's packet and meeting. We have a suggested correction to the January 22nd, 2018 meeting minutes. When you get to that item on the agenda, we would suggest adding the executive session attendees. That was not included in the draft version before you, but we really should be reflecting executive session attendees who are not board members, so we would again just offer that you make that correction at that point in the agenda. I also had a note about adding to the agenda the appointment requests that we received today, and thank you to Eric for making that happen. For departmental news and notes, we have a new full-time adult services librarian that has joined the Simsbury Public Library. A warm welcome to Chris Carney. He has a master's degree in library and information science from SUNY Albany, and most recently, he was serving as a teen services makerspace manager at the Booth Demick Library in Coventry, so welcome, Chris. For Public Works, we recently received a Bright Ideas Grant in the amount of $9,500. We were in part recipients of this due to the efforts of our Clean Energy Task Force as well as town staff. We intend to use this grant to help us obtain a system that will allow us to better monitor our energy use. We're going to pilot this in six of our buildings. So again, we're hoping to more accurately track our energy usage. Ultimately, this data will help us learn how we can lower our energy usage and ultimately lower our operational costs for our buildings. Congratulations are in order for our Public Works Director, Tom Roy. He recently obtained certification as a Certified Energy Manager. In order to obtain that certification, he did have to undergo a process that required a review of his past experience in energy work, as well as his qualifications. He also needed to complete an educational component as well as pass the CEM exam. I am confident that this knowledge that Tom has gained, along with his certification, will be valuable to the town as we move forward with our energy management efforts. Also from Public Works, we have received a KERMA Excellence in Risk Management Award. We attended the ceremony on January 26th. I was able to join the Public Works Department for that, even though I hadn't technically started work. I was glad to be there to support them. They were recognized for their continued effort... They were recognized for their continued efforts to reduce workplace injuries and to promote safety in all areas of their operations. The department has a low rate of workplace injuries when compared to our peers. We received a $2,500 grant that accompanied that award, and we do plan to use that for our ongoing safety and risk management efforts in the Public Works Department. So congratulations to the folks in the department for their work in this area. An update from the town manager's office. As you know, this spring, we will be very busy with our leadership team recruitments. We will be recruiting for three department head positions this spring. The Director of Finance, the Director of Culture, Parks and Recreation, and our Police Chief. We have initiated the recruitment for Police Chief. We have involvement from members of the Police Commission, who are functioning as an Executive Search Committee. And Eric Wellman and Sean Askam have joined in assisting with that recruitment. Additionally, I will be meeting with the Board of Finance at their upcoming meeting on February 20th to discuss a potential recruitment plan for hiring the Finance Director position. And shortly thereafter, I plan to do the same with the Culture, Parks and Recreation Commission regarding the recruitment for our Director of Culture, Parks and Recreation. So it will be a very busy spring working on these recruitments, but I look forward to doing so. And lastly, under Special Events, our Social Services Department will be doing a presentation on the dangers of vaping. The Youth Services Bureau is working with the library and the Community for Care to offer a presentation on vaping. This will occur on Wednesday, March 14th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. in the Simsberry Public Library Program Room. This is open to both parents and teens, as well as community members at large. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Maria. Okay, moving on now to Selectmen Actions. We will begin with tax refunds. Is there a motion effective February 15th, 2018, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $529,105.94 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And the motion carries. B is gathering permits. So there are eight events for which sponsors are requesting public gathering permits. They include the Simsberry Flea Market, the Mini Maker Fair, my best friend's 5K, the Duck Race, the Talke Mountain Music Festival, car show, a arts and crafts festival, and the Simsberry Triathlon. And Jerry Tonner is here for a little more information. Jerry, is there anything else you would add?
As you have before you, there are a number of events that were considered by the committee at the January 31st meeting. There were also a couple of events that were approved electronically. There were really no issues that the committee had to speak of, so we were able to allow people not to have to, to come in. But by and large, you know, we were able to get everyone in. And the events are before you, and I know Mark Demming is here from the Performing Arts Center Board, and Lisa Kareem is here from the, from the library, who's sponsoring the Mini Maker Fair on Saturday, May 5th. I believe you also have summaries of, of the various events that the applicants made and presented to us. The one event that originally we'd asked for conditional approval on was the Simsberry Triathlon. And that committee met and decided to use the same route that they have used in the past. So our concern was if they were looking at a different route that might create some public safety concerns, we would want to have them back in. But they did meet our Public Works Director, Tom Roy, who is part of that committee, as well as a participating triathlete. I spoke with him today, or we communicated, and he felt that the committee is comfortable going forward with that event, doesn't create any other, any issues that we haven't addressed in the past from a public safety or zoning standpoint. So I think all the events that you have in front of you are ready for final approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have, and I'm sure our other event people can, can address them as well.
Thanks. So at this point, has the triathlon gotten the final running route approval?
They have.
They have? Okay.
Yeah, and, and that's it. Initially, they were talking about possibly doing or returning to a route that they had done previously. Police in particular had concerns from, from a traffic standpoint. Once they met as a committee, they decided just to keep things the same way they did last year. So I think a lot safer route, a lot easier for the, the volunteers and the race director to handle as well, and the participants. So I think they're fine.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Yeah, sure.
On the Talke Mountain Music Festival, I'm assuming those dates only apply to the music festival, and those are not additional concert dates?
That's correct.
Or anything else?
We have not received any other concert applications yet.
Because we got a lot of feedback that, last year, and I think we should
Understood.
Take some of those issues into account.
I, I, I believe that the Board and the new Executive Director have had those discussions, and when they have other events, they'll certainly will, we will address them at that time.
So this is just the music festival?
None others right, no others right now.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion effective February 15th, 2018, to approve the public gathering applications as presented in the Agenda Submission Form and to authorize the issuance of those public gathering permits?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Item C, which is the fee schedule for Culture, Parks and Rec. They're recommending a 2018 fee schedule for the golf course, the aquatic facility, and the summer camps. Would you want to talk a little bit about what's, you know, what's changing?
Sure. And each year, the, the Culture, Parks and Recreation Commission addresses these three areas. And, you know, prior to that meeting, they asked staff to, to do a number of things to prepare for that. And one of the, the important things is for us to survey and, and, and look at a benchmark for, for what other, both municipal facilities, privately-run facilities, may also be doing. So that's one of the, the considerations. We try and look at, at where we've been, where our fee history has been, what are our experiences? Has there been any impact on attendance or usage of the facilities because of what we've done with fees, whether positive or negative? A lot of lengthy discussion on the part of the commission. I think they do a very thorough job with this. And in the end, you have in front of you in, in each area, what the increases are, what, given our three-year average, what that would translate into. And in some cases, it's fairly significant, and others, you know, not as much. But I can, actually, if you'd like, I can, you know, start with, whether it's golf, there's probably more, you know, more different fee categories there and probably more changes. Overall, I think that the commission, you know, again, looked at, looked at the survey that has been done of other courses and, and looked at the fact that we've tried to keep fees intact, or in line, really, for the last three years. There have not been any fee increases since 2016. And we also are trying to add some programs, you know, to the maintenance operation, to give Mike Wallace and his staff the ability to, to do some upgrades. I, I think combining those two things and looking at what our, some of our counterparts are doing, they felt that, you know, some increases, I think by and large modest, were justified. A couple of things I'd like to point out, too, there are a couple of new fee categories in here that were also discussed at length. One of them, the first one, you'll see it's a new six-hole fee. And, and one of the things, if you follow the golf industry and, and the decline in play, and, and one of the major factors that's cited is the time that's involved with it. And, and we certainly have experienced that. What, what we're trying to do is, is to offer folks, and hopefully families, the ability to come up in a reduced time period to play six holes. So maybe you do it in an hour and a half to two hours versus the three hours that it may take you otherwise. We're gonna, we want to try it on a, on a trial basis. It'll be, just be on Friday afternoons, and we hope to expand that beyond it. Our, our hope is it will be very well-received. We've heard from, you know, some other folks that have been at courses that have done it, received some pretty good input on, on, you know, how to administer some of the controls that we may want to put on it. But I think it's certainly worth a try. You know, we're still at that point where we're trying to get people up there, maybe that played and stopped playing, or maybe haven't played at all. This is a pretty, I, I think, a, a nice option, to have people come up and play and, and in a pretty relaxed manner. And hopefully, they, you know, they may decide to come back and, and spend more time there. So I think everyone agreed that it's certainly worth a try. We'd like to, you know, see it get off the ground. The other new fee in here is, is an adult limited pass, which would basically be an adult pass for weekdays only. So up until now, we've, our, our passes have been seven-day-a-week passes. And we, periodically, we do receive input from folks that, you know, maybe they can play during the week, not on the weekend. So, you know, you look at, I think over time, we've tried to accommodate a lot of different groups. And, and I think there's been a very, very good response, and, and this was one that we've looked at. Other courses have done it, not, not a lot, but others have. And based on the feedback that we received, we thought it would, it certainly warranted a try. So that's the other new fee that we're offering. Given that, I'd be glad to answer any, any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions?
Jerry, I, I like the idea of the six-hole evening walk, if you will. I think that's a very good idea. I think it's a great way to potentially get people out there to learn about the course, to get exposed to golf in the, maybe a little less stressful atmosphere. So I think that's, that's a very good idea.
So I just have, I have one question on, on the senior limited versus unlimited. I might be drawing too much of an assumption here, but don't most of those folks play during the week already?
Do most seniors play during the week?
Right.
We do have more of those in the seven-day-a-week. That's correct.
So I guess my concern is, is we're going to give them a $475 discount for the same rounds of golf they're already playing. Because if they're not really coming on the weekend already.
So I'm saying they're going to cannibalize from the
Yeah. You're gonna, you're gonna lose the, you're gonna lose the unlimited round.
I will say this, we subsidize the unlimited pass more than probably any other pass that we offer. The folks that tend to opt for that do extremely well. I don't think we will lose anyone.
But they play during the week mostly, right?
They play seven days.
They do play seven days a week?
Play seven days a week, yeah.
All right. So just something to keep an eye on, because
We'll do.
To Chris's point of, if we lose $475 and all of a sudden 50 people move over, then we've actually
Right. You know, we track, yeah, we do track every, every one of the categories, as I said, to see where, you know, where they're trending. And, and if we did find that, Sean, I think we would certainly adjust that. But again, that's probably, I'm going to say, of the season pass fees we offer, probably the most heavily subsidized.
Okay.
Hey, Jerry.
Hi, Chris.
How are you? You know, when I attended the, the January meeting of the, of the Parks and Rec Commission, I got some of the data you guys did for the financials. And just as, for the, for the Board's education, I mean, the rounds played over the last 10 years is significantly down. So they have, you know, tangible data which points to this. So at some point, we're going to be at a, I think, at a tipping point where these fees start to be elevated more and more to offset for the lost revenue in consideration of the cost of the operation. So that'll be something I think we're going to be facing. And you can see this, it's incredibly Go ahead. One question I had, I applaud you for the, you know, adding that, the category. And as I, I have myself taken advantage of Twilight, played many times in my travels and such, but I'm going to play the next day and just, you know, shake the rust off a little bit. The Twilight special under the non-resident, is there not one for a resident? Or is that just, is that inclusive of both? So go into non-resident, the Twilight special, weekday after six. Do we not have one for residents, or is that just
That is the resident.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the resident fee.
Okay. It's listed under the non-resident section, so I was just curious then. Okay.
You, you know, you're right, that actually there should be a, a separate category for, you know, it's funny, though, a couple of those fees, all they're aimed at non-residents, and, and that's why they're in there. They're really open to anyone. But the Twilight is really a, it is a resident rate. It should be identified separately.
It's all inclusive then. Anybody who shows up after six. Where you live, that's the rate you're paying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. Are there any other questions? All right. Appreciate the work that, that went into that. And this was unanimously approved by Culture, Parks and Rec?
I'm sorry?
This recommendation was unanimously approved
It was. It was unanimous. And I should also say, one of the other things that was discussed at, at length, and again, looking at, you know, within the industry, is challenging it as, as it has been in the last few years, and certainly we've, we've experienced that. One of the observations is coming out of the courses that are doing well, or the courses that have invested in their, you know, in their facility and in their infrastructure. And, you know, we've talked about that, and I know there have been, you know, some sizable investments that we've made, you know, whether it was redoing our bunkers and a couple of the greens that needed to be redone. And I, I think that it has, even in the, the most difficult times, it's, it's helped us really remain competitive. And I think as things start to turn, I think we will really be the beneficiary of that. I really believe that. And I think more so, maybe than a lot of other courses in the area, that, you know, whether they did it or not, I don't know. But I, I do know we've, we do get a lot, a lot of positive feedback on that, both from residents and non-residents. And I think we've been able to keep ourselves in a competitive light and, you know, because of that. So I think it's something that, you know, you all should be, should be made aware of. And the commission certainly acknowledged that as well.
Sean? Just one quick question. So Jerry, I, I presume that these revenue increases offset the expense increases in the overall budget?
They do.
So that, that'll line up during budget time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And did you, I forget, do you want to bring up the speed, the, I know that this is appropriate for this category, but the restaurant lease has been, we're, we're continuing on with that. How does a restaurant lease up there work? You know, maybe for our education purposes?
The restaurant lease is actually going into its second of its, it was a two-year lease, they're going into their second year now. And, you know, from all the discussions I've had with, with them, I think they were, they were pleased with the way the first year went. Again, they experienced, you know, somewhat of the downturn, you know, that we have as well. But I think, again, they were, you know, Ryan Krieger is the, is the, the manager, and by and large, I think they were, they were happy with the way the first year went. The other thing I should mention, too, is that as much as last year was, you know, we saw a decline in rounds, our outing revenue remained steady. And, and, and that's really, you know, one where we certainly benefit, but, but the restaurant benefits as well. So we all have a hand in that. And, and we just, matter of fact, we just signed on another one, another large outing. So I, I think, you know, that has been, been very, very positive for us, not only the golf course, but for the restaurants. So to answer your question, they are going into their second year. I think they're very, very positive about, about the upcoming year.
And, and do you think that your customers, the daily play folks, your regulars, are they, are they happy with what
I think they are.
Their offerings over there and such?
Yeah.
Does it match up with what we want and, and need and such?
It do. I, I think they've been very, I think the restaurants have been very responsive to the, to, whether it's the leagues, whether it's the outings, whether it's just, you know, the, the public play. I think they've been very, very responsive. And, and I think everything that I've heard and that I hear from our, our pro and their staff is, the public seems to be very happy with that. So we, we hope it continues to be a very positive, you know, partnership.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a, a motion effective February 15th, 2018, to approve the 2018 fee schedule for the Simsberry Farms Golf Course, Aquatic Facilities, and Summer Camps as presented?
Someone? Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay. And that motion passes. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah. So the last item under Selectmen Actions, the Simsberry Meadows Performing Arts Center is soon to begin construction on a new ticket booth along Iron Horse, and they've requested that this board waive the building permit fee of $630 and the zoning compliance fee of $25. I didn't know if there was anyone here who was going to speak to that. Yes.
Mark?
Yeah, would you want to just give a, just a, you know, a brief update on the project and
Yeah, Mark Demming, free Ryan Circle. We expect the ticket booth construction to start somewhere in early to mid-spring. As you well know, that once this building is completed, it will be owned by the town of Simsbury. So therefore, we are requesting that the fee be waived, since it will be town property. And hopefully, everything works well. We will be up and running by the end of May, so that the first concerts that will begin in June will be using the ticket booth as the place where you can purchase tickets as well, as opposed to having, renting a trailer, which would cost us $6,000 to $8,000 a year. And as you've seen probably in the drawings that we've submitted, it's a fairly more attractive-looking little structure than what we have.
It's going to be train-themed, right?
Train-themed, yes. Yeah. So as we said, pending the coming of spring, and weather permitting, we'd look to start construction sometime in April into May, with construction being totally completed by the end of May, at the latest date.
Thank you. Any questions? Maria?
Just a couple of items that I would like to point out. Looking forward, if this project is constructed, we will have some modest costs associated with the project, once we take ownership of that, of that particular structure. So I did point out for you all, under financial impact, we confirmed with our insurance carrier for LAP purposes, and that insurance carrier is Kirma, that once we add the structure to our statement of values, it will only add a cost of about $100 a year to insure the structure. And then, of course, we would just have, you know, occasional maintenance fees and things of that nature. But related to the larger item of fee waivers, I did point this out under the summary of submission, and will also make the suggestion, when I bring my list of potential projects and goals forward to you all, that I think there would be some era in taking a look at this issue a little more holistically. When researching this matter with staff, I was unable to locate an existing policy or ordinance on fee waivers. And we currently do not have a standardized form for folks to submit to us if in fact that they are seeking a fee waiver. And just for equity purposes amongst our various nonprofit organizations in the community, as well as folks who are doing service projects, I think it would be helpful for us to develop something of that nature. So again, I would just recommend that as a potential future project for us to work on.
We're smiling down here, because that did come up in our last term, that we start to work on
You can go with the, along with the banner committee, too.
The comprehensive policy.
To solve that issue, don't worry about it.
Well, fee waivers come up quite often, and I in particular have requested, I think Lisa called it the Cheryl Amendment or something, I don't know, she had a name for it. Because it comes up every time. And I totally support that.
Well, for all of these, we're relying on past precedent, and I always worry about setting new precedent unintentionally. So anytime we can have a policy to lean back on, I would welcome that. Okay, great. So is there a motion effective February 15th, 2018, to approve a building permit and zoning compliance fee waiver for the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center in the aggregate amount of $655 for the purpose of construction of the ticket booth?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So under appointments and resignations, can I have a motion to reappoint Brendan Walsh as a regular member of the Police Commission with an expiration date of January 1, 2021?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Also, two other names. Jacqueline, is there a motion to appoint Jacqueline Batos as a member of the Zoning Commission with a term expiring December 2 of 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And is there a motion to appoint Susan Ray to the Recycling Committee with a term expiring December 2, 2019?
So moved. I'm sorry.
Cheryl, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. And extend our thanks to Gerald Post, who is leaving the zoning commission, Jack you'll be replacing. Okay, appointments and resignations. So reviewing the minutes for our special meeting on January 22 of 2017, there was the proposed change to add language, including, who was in the executive session with us, including Jamie Rabbit, Bob DiCrescenzo, Bob Carr, Sean Kimball, and Melissa Appleby? Is there a motion to add that to the, to amend the minutes to add that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so we can add that to the minutes for the special meeting. Any changes, any other changes anyone would propose to either the special meeting or the regular meeting?
No.
Okay, then they stand as presented. Moving on to Selectman Liaison and Subcommittee Reports, I just have one item here that involves the library. So the Personnel Subcommittee was asked to reclassify the head of circulation position at the library to bring it more in line with the actual responsibilities of the job. The current head of circulation is scheduled to retire on March 1st, and the financial impact would be about $20,000 in fiscal year 19 budget. And the proposal was unanimously approved by the Personnel Subcommittee. Lisa, is there anything that you would add to this? Yeah, sure, thanks.
Lisa Kareem, Library Director. I think the key point to add to this is that the current head of circulation supervises eight staff, however, she's never been compensated at the appropriate level for supervising that number of employees. The head of adult services and the head of children's services supervise 10 and 12 employees respectively. So we are unable to replace the head of circulation as it is currently classified. So this is imperative for the sustainability of the library. More importantly, it addresses an issue in the tech services department. When Linda Bilado, who was the head of tech services, retired in 2012, she was not replaced. The tech services department was absorbed by the library director as the head supervisor for that department. It's not really sustainable, and it's not an efficient use of resources. Comparable libraries to Simsbury, Chester, Avon, Suddington, they all employ separate MLIS staff to head those departments in their libraries. So this would also become a professional position.
Yeah. Any questions?
So my only point was, I'm very much in support of this, but this is going to increase the budget by $24,000 in two weeks. So just remember that, because $24,000 is almost a quarter of a point, and we don't have that space in the budget from my memory last year. So again, we need to support this, but this is going to have to come from somewhere else, or it's going to have to come from a revenue increase, so. And again, $24,000 is a small amount, but when we start adding up the 10s, the 20s, and the 30s, we get up to a percent, and then some pretty quickly. So just keep that in mind when we're doing the budget. But again, I do support this.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the position, classification of head of borrowing and technical services and the job description as presented? And further, to approve an annual salary range for the head of borrowing and technical services position of $72,702 to $89,597, which can be amended from time to time through the collective bargaining process?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other Liaison Subcommittee Reports?
I have a quick one. Well, Maria, I already gave my Community for Care update, but just to reiterate, the Community for Care will be sponsoring a program on March 14th on the dangers of vaping. This program is open to all members of the public. We encourage parents to attend, and that our two school resource officers will be bringing paraphernalia, so that parents can actually see and look at what this looks like, and know whether or not they have it in their homes or not. We, we had a very nice write-up in the Valley Press on the Community for Care, and I'd like to thank them for their attention to our committee. And I would encourage members of the public to attend. We have some, some really great information and exchanges going on there. We are looking forward to a joint program with the library in the teen services area in May. And again, it will be focused on opioid use and children. And so if you'll keep that on your radar for May 9th. The Aging and Disability Commission on Tuesday of next week, is that the 20th? I don't even have my calendar in front of me. Will be having a guest speaker at their meeting from the AARP regarding developing an age-friendly community. You know, we've all seen the bike-friendly community and things like that. And these are ideas for us to, to look at as a community on how we can make ourselves more welcoming to our older citizens.
Good, thanks, Cheryl. Anybody else? Sean?
Just on the financial side, we're entering my favorite time of year, so obviously, we're in the eve of the budget. So I'm looking forward to going to the Board of Finance meeting next week and
Oh, not St. Patrick's Day.
Well, St. Patrick's Day is in the middle of the budget season, so life is good for Sean Patrick here. And thankfully, the meeting is not on the 17th, it's on the 10th. Otherwise, there would be not, not be a quorum. Additionally, for those that care, and there's probably three of us, the Capper is done and in the finance director's office. So I did obtain the first copy, and it was very exciting. So if other folks would like to see our annual financial report, it is available, so.
That's great.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, I want to make sure now, if we adjourn to executive session, that I get all, everybody who's going to be attending. Maria, will Melissa be attending?
Regarding 23 Mountain Road, that will be myself, Ms. Appleby, as well as our town attorney. And regarding Deepwater Wind, Assistant Town Planner, Mike Litten, will be joining us in addition to Ms. Appleby and our town attorney.
Okay. So is there, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session with Maria Capriola, Melissa Appleby, Bob DiCrescenzo, and Mike Litten to discuss the purchase? And sales agreement of 23 Mountain Road in Tariffill, and pending claims and litigation concerning the Deepwater Wind appeal?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, there's one addition on an attendee for Deepwater is Attorney Lang. Lang, Linger.
Linger, okay, just, can we add his name to that list? Okay.